I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, December 6, 2017. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
McFarland.
Here.
Norantoff. Path.
Here.
Haystack.
Here.
And Sula.
Present, we do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Chair would like to recognize that Mr. Norantoff has arrived. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was conducted on November 15th. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So moved?
Moved to approve?
Moved to approve.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Path. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a zoning map amendment for property located at 6261 Washington Street.
Timothy A. and Lisa E. Bixler have requested a zoning map amendment to rezone their property at 6261 Washington Street from R2 PUD, Single Family Residential District, as a planned unit development, to O1, Restricted Office District. The subject property was annexed and zoned with the phase of the South Ridge PUD. However, it was not incorporated into the development as an existing single-family home remained on the site. The property is completely surrounded by residentially-zoned property and is designated as Low Density Residential in the Village of Gurnee's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The Planning and Zoning Board's review in this matter is merely associated with the requested O1 zoning district and not with any specific use on the property. As with all zoning map amendment petitions, the Planning and Zoning Board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Village Board for their determination. The applicant is in attendance to present his petition and answer any questions the Board may have. Staff has received multiple phone calls and five letters in opposition of the proposed zoning map amendment. The letters are part of the official record and have been given to the Planning and Zoning Board for review. The letters that we received were from the homeowners at 7785 and 89 Silo Court and 6328 Old Farm Lane. We also received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Krier.
Okay. Thank you, Clara. This matter is a public hearing, so I would request anyone from the petitioner or members of the general public who either intend to make testimony, ask a question, or make a comment to please stand and be sworn in by the Village Attorney. So basically, if you think you're going to say something, please stand.
Okay, please stand and raise your right hand. You're sure to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Maybe indicate I do. Okay, you maybe see that.
Okay, and the way that, for those of you who haven't been to one of our meetings before, the way this works is the petitioner will make a presentation, we'll ask questions, and then we'll open the floor to the public, give the opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the Board. Once we've heard all the questions, then we'll try to address the issues the best we can, deliver it amongst ourselves, and then we'll make some sort of recommendation to the Village Board in the form of a motion. We don't have final decision-making authority here. We make a recommendation to the Village Board. Okay? So at this time, I'll turn the microphone over to the petitioner. All our meetings are recorded, so as you do use the microphone, whether it's petitioner or members of the public, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't do a lot of public speaking, so I'm pretty nervous, but...
That's okay. Most of the people here don't, so don't worry about it.
Timothy Bixler, 6261 Washington Street. I prepared some remarks, just so I don't lose track of where I am.
Sure.
I don't know which way is appropriate to face.
Please us, yeah.
Let's see, address the... So, sorry. I'll read my own writing here. "So we've been proud and happy members of Gurnee for almost 20 years. Gurnee and Gurnee schools have been a great place to raise our children. We, as a family, have developed friendships, memories that will last a lifetime. We've also witnessed a lot of change to the area in the time that we've lived in our home on Washington Street. It is, though, time for us to move on, and while this house was a perfect place for us to make home when we first moved to the area, things have evolved to the point that Washington Street is no longer a friendly place to raise children. Our home's proximity to Washington Street has been consistently cited by potential residential purchasers as the number-one reason that they don't wish to pursue a purchase on our property. Conversely, the proximity to Washington Street has been the number-one driver for commercial interest in our property. The zoning of our property, as R2, is the single determining factor as to why our property has lingered unsold for almost a year. When we first put our property on the market, we had a recent appraisal for $275,000. That's based on the area of the house multiplied by the local price per square foot." You all know the sort of the drill there, with some detractors and additions to come up with that number. "We've continued to drop the price of our house to significantly below the price per square foot of any home in the surrounding area. We are being compared to smaller houses on smaller lots on slabs in the Grand Wood Park area, and even those houses are selling with a very short cycle life on the market. With the Gurnee real estate market inventory levels reportedly very low, 1.3 acres on a full basement with 1,600 square feet should be a slam dunk. But here we sit, our price dropping to the point that the only offer that we have received in that year started negotiating at the price that we paid for the home nearly 20 years ago. That means that our home, being marketed as a home, has not appreciated a single dime in 20 years. That seems unfathomable in a desirable area like our beloved Gurnee. And then to, I guess, all of our friends back here in South Ridge, we'd welcome and entertain any offer that you or your association would, for our property, to build a park, whatever purpose you would propose. Once you buy it, we have little interest in your usage, but we would hope that you would enjoy it. We're seeking a zoning change to use the property for office space. We're not asking for a strip club or adult bookstore or anything else that would be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood and families, a neighborhood that, by the way, surrounds our home but is not part of it. Our pure properties are and always have been on Washington Street. We have had little interaction with South Ridge residents, although some of you are our friends, and we do appreciate those friendships over the years. And that's not to say that we don't have friends through our children and through our other associations, but the fact is that our property is really not part of South Ridge. And that's it so far."
Okay, thank you.
Oh. To zone, to address the spot zoning issue, there are instances on the map that set the precedent for spot zoning. I know there's not many, but there are a couple on here that sort of set that precedent. So I know it's something that is possible and has happened in the past.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll take the microphone back, please. Thank you. Questions or comments? For now, yes. Okay. Any questions, comments from members of the... Yes?
My question is, I'm just wondering if the petitioner or anyone else is currently living in the property right now?
We're back and forth...
I'm sorry. You're going to... I'm sorry. You can use the microphone at the center there, yeah.
Well, we're currently back and forth between Illinois and Puerto Rico, so periodically we're there.
I just wanted to know if it was inhabitable or not.
It is habitable.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Path?
I guess I have one. Could this property be subdivided at all for more than one home? Is there a way to do that?
That's a question for staff.
I don't have the plat directly in front of me. There's a minimum lot width. If they could meet the minimum lot width, it might be possible. I'm not sure that it is...
I didn't know if they could do a double depth.
It could be subdivided into two narrow pieces, both with fronting Washington.
Because it was part of the South Ridge PUD, it was granted a reduced lot width requirement. So because it's part of the South Ridge R2 PUD, it has a 75-foot lot width. The property measures 150 feet in width along Washington Street, so it could be subdivided into two lots. Of course, that would require the demolition and removal of the existing home structure.
Got it.
Right. Right. I just wondered if somebody could look at it for that purpose, anyway. All right.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open the floor to the public. If anyone from the public would care to make a, ask a question or make a comment, if you could please go to the microphone in the center of the room, state your name and address for the record, and like I said before, present your comments to us, and after we've heard from everybody, we'll try to address them the best we can.
Hi, I'm Robert Krier. I live at 6316 Old Farm Lane, so one of the houses is directly opposite of the property. And one of my biggest concerns is I'm newer in the neighborhood. Me and my wife just moved in two years ago into South Ridge, and one of my biggest concerns would be the loss of green space. I don't want a parking lot in my backyard, especially when we're surrounded by 11 homes, even though there is a space of a sidewalk or a walk space in between the other homes. So that's one of my larger concerns. The other part is, once it's rezoned, I'm always concerned, it might start out as one thing and evolve into something else. And once it's rezoned, it could become, whether it's a dentist office or some other type of office, you don't know what it'll be in the future. So that's a, leaves an uncertainty there. So part of the beauty of the house, too, that I moved in, is the beautiful space that everything had around it. So I'd hate to ruin the home of South Ridge, or the community of South Ridge, when something were to go in behind of it and not really fit the area. And then the other part, I know I went through and other surrounding, directly neighboring properties, went through and followed through the Gurnee zoning book and filed a formal written protest. So that will be on file, too, for the next board requiring a two-thirds vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kalinda Wilcox. We live at 85 Silo. Just like you guys, we bought our home about a year ago, a little over a year ago. Our property actually butts right up to the back of the property, so we are looking right into your backyard. One of the reasons we purchased the home for the same reason is because the scenery is beautiful. It's a really quiet neighborhood. Though we're a little closer to Washington, it's still really beautiful and quiet. I have grave concern, thinking that there's going to be a property or a business behind, right out my back door, basically butting up to my back door. One, I don't know what type of business it's going to be or could transition into. Two, I don't know what type of elements it's going to introduce into our neighborhood, which is fairly safe and quiet. And I have children in the neighborhood. We enjoy our backyard. Now I'm going to have a parking lot, and I don't know how that's going to be covered. I don't know how it's going to impact us. I just have a lot of concerns. And though my heart aches for them, and I feel bad that they can't sell the property, I have to be selfish in the say, in the selfish in the way to say that's not my concern or fault at this moment. And I really, I will be like you protesting as well. I didn't know that we could do that as well, so I will definitely do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kay Meyer. I am at 92 Foxborough, so my backyard is directly against this beautiful property. I did write a letter, but it didn't get to you on time. I'd be happy to give you copies. But I wanted to first thank you for involving all of us and for making it so easy for us to call and have someone as knowledgeable as Ms. Schaaf. She really made clear how policies are already in place that have really made Gurnee a good place to live. And I especially appreciate that the papers were available at the library for after-hours. My husband and I brought our home at 92 Foxborough Lane in May 1995. Because of the view that we have from each window in our house and from our deck, the farmstead grove of mature pine trees really makes the view a source of peace and joy in all seasons and provides a buffer of the traffic noise from Washington Street. The setting gives rise to a good sense of neighborliness, and the layout allows us to keep watch over stray children, dogs, or any strangers in the subdivision. So among our concerns, we, as the longtime homeowners, strongly desire to hold on to these positive aspects. And we ask that regardless the ultimate use of the land at 6261 Washington Street, that we can keep the natural elements, open space, and sound buffering effect, and the view that we deserve. Specific questions that we have, regardless of what the future brings for this land, is that we notice frequent standing water, and there are some mossy areas where grass is not growing. We'd like to ask the Board, you know, what preventive steps will be taken to ensure that any building or parking lot will not oversaturate the soil and cause seepage into the basements of the adjoining homes. Each of my neighbors along my side of the street have improved their properties with finished basements. What types of landscaping remedies might be required in the case that the present mature trees are removed or privacy walls and plants are added to our shared property lines? How will the village ensure that noise, odors, and lighting remain at natural levels so that we can enjoy our back rooms and our backyards? Per ordinance, how do the rules for setbacks and water easements state the positioning and height of any future building? Would a parking lot be approved for the back or the front of the property? How will safety and traffic be managed for vehicles who desire to turn across two lanes of traffic to get in and out of the driveway on Washington? Will the next property owner be hooked into village water and sewer lines? Is there consideration for forbidding rooftop decks, satellite dishes, clotheslines, electrical wiring? If the decision of the Board results in continued classification of 6261 Washington Street to be residential, might we do well to require the homeowner to join the South Ridge Homeowners Association, as was apparently intended in the original zoning maps? So thank you for considering those questions, and I'm hoping we can get some answers on some of those this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? You could ask another one, sure.
I'm also just a little concerned about what this will do to my property value in the future as well, because anyone who's looking to purchase a home isn't usually looking to purchase a home that butts up to a business. So I am greatly concerned that. And had I known that this would be future state a year ago, we definitely wouldn't have purchased this home. We would have looked in other areas where, you know, where we could have purchased. So we purchased for the scenery, and because of the area, it is residential. So that, it really does concern me, like what that's going to look like 10, 20 years from now when I go to sell my home. So, sorry, I forgot that. I apologize.
That's okay.
Nervous and very emotional right now.
That's okay. It's all right. All right. Any other questions?
Good evening. Dundit Mar's 84 Foxborough. And we own the property that is directly to the east of the Bixlers' property. So, welcome back. They've been great neighbors for 13 years. We certainly hated to see them leave, but as they know, we look directly perpendicular to their house. So any change in zoning directly affects what we see directly out of our backyard. And all of us as neighbors adjacent to Washington know the traffic has increased over the tenure of time we've been in Gurnee, to the point that traffic is going 24/7, as is I-94. Now, what concerns us, as my neighbors indicated, is any change of zoning and changes to the landscape that exists in their yard, which is very mature and beautiful, to the point where we probably have one of the last passing-through Great Horned Owl pairs that move through our neighborhood and stay. It would be a shame to lose that, in addition to have to look into some business, which would light us up, I would assume, for safety reasons, 24/7. Now, my wife and I went through a rezoning when we lived in our last house in Heather Ridge, to which they told us they wouldn't take down mature trees. We've lived through that and had buildings come up and take down mature trees and wildlife safe areas. So this is a big concern for us as well as we move. Now, as our neighbors indicated, we really feel for the Bixlers, and trust me, I'd rather have them as neighbors to see them move out of the area. We grew up with our kids. Our kids grew up together and went to school together. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If I may, Jim Tilke, 71 Foxborough. My primary comment right now, with perhaps a smile on my face, is that my daughter's dog, Missy, would be very concerned about walking on the path that is right next to this disputed property. And we've enjoyed being able to walk next to it in the afternoon. So that's a marvelous feature. That path that is next to this property is a marvelous feature of the property itself. My other comment, as you review the zoning, is to make sure that the statements are absolutely correct, and all of the properties to both the east and the west, immediately adjacent to this property, are residential. And the properties directly across the street, to the east and to the west, are residential. And so it just seems to me, as unfortunate as it is, is that the property is rightly zoned residential right now. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have to come to the microphone, sir.
Good night. My name is Henry Albino. I am recent to the Gurnee community for two years now, and I'm currently looking for a home, first home, for me and my family. So I was one of the people interested in this property in 6261 Washington Street. And I actually visited an architect, and we were looking at the measurements that the PUD asked for the lots in the properties, in this PUD subdivision, right? And we are, you mentioned that the property could be subdivided into two long lots, but that's only if you look at it from the, from the, from the front. This property, according to the maps, is 150 wide and 350, 300 feet long. If we open a road on the left side, which will be next to the property in the, in the east, right, you can still get to the back, and you will have three residential lots that will be, will give you easily the 75 feet up in the, in the front, and 150 feet in the, in the other dimension. And then there's, I'm not quite sure if it's the 75 and the 150 measurements are like the strict thing that will limit the lots, or if it's by the square footage, because it only asks for 10,000-some square foot, square feet, and the three lots will have more than that. So I don't know if this is the correct moment to ask about this, but if it is, I would like to listen for if it will be considered, like I'm saying, keeping it residential but allowing a subdivision in the other way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
Is it my role yet to answer questions from the neighbors?
No. What we do is, we evaluate the questions, and then we'll decide whether it's a question for staff to answer, or it's a question that we need clarification from you.
Okay.
Okay. So far, all the questions I think I've heard are really staff and technical issues. Okay?
Okay. I have a little more to add.
Okay.
Do you want a final word?
What? I mean, if there's something more you want to add, that's fine. But what I'm trying to say is, we don't want to get into a, you know, point, counterpoint.
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I guess, there's two technical questions that come to mind that I think are best answered by staff, is if the property were rezoned to O1, whatever goes there would have to meet the underlying O1 criteria, in terms of setbacks, acceptable uses, and what, and even if it stayed O, R2 in the future, and there was a resubdivision of anything, there's rules and regulations about how water is managed and civil engineering-type stuff. So that kind of stuff is all kind of protected by underlying code. Resubdividing the property as described with putting a road, I can't visualize that, because if the property's, what was it, 100 and...
150 feet wide.
And you put a street in there...
That's a 60-foot right-of-way typically.
Right.
Which would only leave you 90 feet of depth.
Right, which...
Which, we do not have a minimum depth of lots. However, the front yard setback and the rear yard setback really eat into the buildable area.
Right.
Most residential lots are about 120 feet minimum depth. It could be done, however, the housing, the design of the house would be extremely limited on a 90-foot-deep lot. There is a possibility that it could be done as a planned unit development with a private street, but that would be a whole other zoning process to be able to do something in that matter.
Okay, thank you. I don't know why we're echoing all of a sudden. From my perspective, as is laid out in the materials that we have, I'm really struggling with considering an O1 orientation, rezoning for this, in that it's not an intersection, it's not even close to an intersection, and it is completely surrounded by residential. And, you know, everything that I've always learned over the course of time is, spot zoning is not something that we really want to get into. So that's my perspective, but I'm open for other, obviously open for other opinion. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. I, I'll just piggyback on what Chairman Sula stated. It's a difficult situation, obviously. And one of the things that I examine when I look at this, A, is the surrounding, 100% residential surrounding, and quite a considerable distance away from anything else that would be considered congruent in terms of zoning for other office uses, let's say. What I have to look at, what I consider when I look at O1, is, I was going to assume worst-case scenario, that whoever would be the future purchaser could clear the lot and could build anything that's permitted within the O1 district, provided, again, it met the setbacks, height requirements, and so forth. And if anybody took the opportunity to look at the zoning code and saw what permitted uses were within O1, you would include such uses as a restaurant use with outdoor dining permitted, drive, a drive-through facility. So if it was a bank, it would have drive-through by right. So, you know, I take a look at that use list, and I say, you know, could I see that on that site? Because again, I have to look at this, and I think we as a village have to look at this, is it's O1, so whoever owns it has the right, then, at that point, to put anything in there that could go in an O1. So I don't see that as being compatible with what's there right now. So I don't necessarily agree that it's something that should be done.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question for staff. I realize it's not really relevant to what we're talking about, but it's, you brought up, if you divided it, you'd have the three lots, and you said if we put a street in, it would have a 60-foot right-of-way. If it were a private street, then would, what would the, what would the allowance be? Because that would change the lot size. I assume that could be narrower.
It could be narrower. That's one of the things that we would negotiate into the PUD agreement.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Right-of-way, whether it's included in the square footage of the lots, whether, you know, if it's a common driveway, private street. So there's a lot of flexibility that would be awarded going through that process if it would be granted the PUDs.
I just wanted to see if that was even an option out there, that it could be. But I...
Can I ask you just a follow-up question on that one? Dave, what would realistically be the minimum, like, public safety would require?
Two-way street. You're looking 24 feet... Two-way street, you're looking 24 feet edge-to-edge, plus you always have to have room for the utilities to run through there, so you're probably looking 40 feet, and then at the end you need some means of turnaround.
Turnaround, okay.
Cul-de-sac.
Truck, trucks and the different.
Sort of a bulb.
Or some kind of a cul-de-sac bolt back there.
It's a sticky wicket in that space, but, yeah, I had the same problem as Dave. I looked at the, at the underlying code, and for example, you know, O1, you can have a building that's 40 feet high in that space. And though the lighting and drainage would be, under our underlying code, would have to be contained on the property, you still have the issues that we talked about. So it's a, it's a difficult situation. Like your neighbors, I feel for what you're trying to go through, but I have a hard time supporting O1, because once you get there, then it's O1. You can do what you want.
Okay. Tim, are you looking to say something? Brian?
You know, I just want to point out that in order for the plan commission to make a favorable recommendation to the village board for this map amendment, you know, we have to satisfy these eight standards. And so if we don't satisfy one, it's over. And, you know, two that jump out to me are compatibility with existing use and zoning of nearby property, and the consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan. I mean, this doesn't, it doesn't comply with our current comprehensive plan. This property is, and the comp plan is low-density residential. Everything that surrounds this property is residential. You know, so I don't know how we can make a positive recommendation in this instance. And then to buttress onto that, I mean, this is like the poster child for spot zoning.
Yes.
I mean, there was, in 1979, the Second District Appellate Court struck down a McHenry rezoning of property from residential to commercial as spot zoning, and it was a six-acre parcel. So, you know, I can't support this.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay. I guess a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to rezon the property at 6261 Washington Street from R2 PUD, Single Family Residential District, as a planned unit development to O1, restricted office district.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion or question?
Just for clarification.
I was going to clarify, too. I mean, the motion was made in the affirmative, which we tend to do, so.
Yes.
So yes is in favor.
But rezoning.
And no is against.
Right.
Right. And the only thing I'd add is, you know, I think the commissioners have hit upon it. Technically, it is a request for a zoning change, and then you look at the factors, the eight factors, and then you make the decision, could this end up being spot zoning? And if you come to that conclusion, that is not well-favored, and that's, that's something to be avoided. And so I think the analysis that, and the comments that have been made are appropriate, and the issue here is, they're asking for a use change. So it's everything in O1 that you have to make that assessment on, and then ultimately it is a question about density. And so, you know, the issues about noise, open space, view, safety, those all become part of that analysis that I've heard the commissioners talk about. But I just wanted to clarify, when we use spot zoning, that, that isn't, that's something that is a conclusion or a result of the findings of fact. What the petitioner did was just ask for a change in zoning, and then now, when you look at the facts, you have to convince yourself in making your vote, does that represent spot zoning, or is that a valid zoning request, or something that you can make a favorable recommendation? In all cases, spot zoning is not well-favored. I mean, that's just a bad practice, and so if you come to that conclusion, that will direct how you would vote. Okay. Any additional questions or comments from members of the zoning board? Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bow?
No.
Garrity?
No.
McFarland?
No.
Dorntoff?
Nay.
Path?
Nay.
Paisak?
Nay.
And Sula?
Nay. Motion, motion fails. For members of the general public, just how the process works, the next step would be, staff will make a presentation to the village board, and village board has final decision. The village board meetings work slightly different. They don't take public comment on specific items on the agenda, but there's always an opportunity for public comment at the beginning of their meetings. That would be the time for you to, to come and make comments. And also, the proceedings will be in a report to them, so they will read about all the testimony and references to the correspondence that was submitted regarding this. They have access to the record, and they do consider that before they vote. And our meetings are video and audio recorded, so that, you know, they have access to review those tapes if they care to do that. Okay? Thanks, everyone, for their participation. Our next meeting date is December 13th. Are we going to have anything?
As of right now, we, we don't have any public hearings, and as of right now, we don't have anything, so probably not, but we still have a couple of dates.
Okay. All right. And then the next item on the agenda is public comment, and this is for something other than what we've already talked about this evening, so. Okay, I'm going to close the floor to that item, just in case we don't have a meeting on the 13th. I hope everyone has a great holiday season.
Same to you, sir.
Huh?
Same to you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Paisak, and seconded by Mr. Garrity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We're done. Thank you all. Thank you.